All right, welcome everyone to a regular Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, February 26th, and we will begin with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, any guests that are in the audience that haven't signed the clipboard in the back, please do so. Keep track of that. Okay, let me just get my... Tim, any adjustments to the agenda?
No, no kidding.
Moving on to review and approve the meeting minutes for February 5th, 2018, a regular Selectmen's meeting.
Chairman, when I make a motion, we approve the Monday, February 5th, 2018 regular meeting of the Selectmen with any changes or corrections.
Donnie's motion and Jim's seconds. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Next, we will move on to Section 4, Public to Speak on a Non-Agenda Item. Al.
Well, if any of you are regular readers, or even irregular readers of my column, and have seen the ads, this is really my last reportage of your board, as well as the school board, which is a role that I didn't exactly ask for in the first place. But I've done it, and it's been over four years, surprisingly. And a couple of things have changed in the last few months, and now I'm a couple of statewide boards that is chewing up my time. And I just... The old zeal isn't there. I've tried to take, paint a positive picture of these meetings. I thoroughly enjoyed the Selectmen's meetings in particular, and I haven't gotten any complaints to my face from any of you yet. So I figured I better go out while we're getting them good. And so, it truly has been a pleasure. I am really impressed with the people on this board, and certainly the staff here. And I hope that I have been able to send a message to the town that it's in good hands, because that's what I really believe. And so... And I showed up last Tuesday, and the door was locked, thinking that this meeting was going to be...
Oh, the day after the holiday, oh!
And of course, I didn't look at my notes. And so, here I said, hey, if you haven't found a new, worn body to be the reporter, I'd be happy to do this one, and that was greeted with approval. And so, I'm still going to continue to do the things that I've enjoyed doing, writing my column, doing my 10 questions thing with the no shortage of really interesting people in this town, and so forth. So I like doing those things. And so, something had to give, and I figured my enthusiasm is waning a little bit. I don't want that to come through in how I write things off.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That make sense?
It does.
So, thank you. Thank you for the privilege.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Al, and you've done, you have done a great job just, you know, giving a complete picture of what's going on, very informative, and it's, we've just really appreciated it, so thank you.
Hopefully, you'll have a real reporter in here in the future.
I think just, you know, well, time will tell, so, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
And if I may, I'd like to thank Al too, on behalf of myself and town staff. Al's done, I was always willing to do a good job, in fact, check the story, and if you made a mistake, was willing to correct it. So thank you for being, doing a good job, and being, you know, so far in last, we appreciate it.
And if I could ask Tracy to keep me on your email list, because if I see something coming up in the agenda that particularly interests me, and I think there's something here already, I need to show up again, but I'll leave my notebook at home. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, Mark?
Okay, also, I want to, Public to Speak on a Non-Agenda Item. I was, would like to request to the Board of Selectmen to look into the environmental assessment that we did for the airport extension project. We got some responses at the Airport Commission as a part of our package, and I saw it at the following meeting, you folks got them as well. And the, it's, there's a couple, it was pointed out a couple times that there were some incorrect, inaccuracies in the text in there, a lot of them were in the runway length analysis, and they were just pointing out that, you know, those were amendments to the environmental assessment, even though it's substantial part of the number of pages of the environmental assessment. But I was just wondering how this process goes, if, even if they're just an appendix, are they going to try to correct the record so that that document is factually accurate, or how does it proceed? I'm just kind of curious, and didn't know if you could find that out for me.
So, so what you're asking is, in the, in the letters that were written, because yeah, we did get it, get those two, one or two meetings ago. So, in the letters that were written to the FAA, some inaccuracies were pointed out, and I just want to know if there's going to be a correction to the record?
Yeah, they didn't say they were going to correct them.
Okay.
And in one case, online there, I put in something about our concerns, which I had brought up at the public meetings, all about the blowing and drifting snow becoming a problem. And for some reason, they responded saying, you know, that this was an existing problem, and it's not an existing problem. So I also, they weren't signed, so I didn't know who to respond to. It seemed odd to me that the conclusion that they drew on that, you know, without looking into it, you know, just assumed that it was a present problem, and it's not. I just happened to be observant enough that, driving past the end of the runway, first many winters as I have, you know, I see what goes on with the blowing and drifting snow. When that gets 400 feet close in my business, it just seems obvious to me it's going to create an issue. And so, I would like to kind of correct that too, if I knew who to respond to. So if you could find out who actually answered those, I would like that as well.
Yeah. We can, we can ask, certainly look into that.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Chris Lynch, I'm with a company called Matrix Design Group. We design and build fiber optic networks, and we'd be interested in speaking with the town of Rangel about building a fiber optic network here to serve all 1,275 homes. We expect the project will be about $4.6 million. We'd be looking for the town to participate to create the Rite-A-Way on the poles, which is commonly called make ready work. The town would continue to own the Rite-A-Way on the poles, and the contribution from the town would probably be about $1.1 million of the $4.6. I'm here tonight just to gauge if there'd be interest on the part of the town in getting true high-speed broadband to everybody, yes?
Yeah.
And I should also note that our interest, in large part, was spurred by the Franklin County Broadband Initiative, so credit is due to them. And for the people taking notes, I have business cards, so you don't have to worry about it.
Okay. Thank you. So Chris, where do you, where do you work out of? Where is your business, are you a main company?
We're actually out of East Hanover, New Jersey. If you want, I'll give you the two second here, this is who we are.
Yeah.
Matrix Design Group is a sister company of Millennium Communications. Matrix does the engineering, Millennium does the installation and the electronics. So we can do any project from design to build, or as we like to say, from concept to completion. We've been in business for over 20, 21 years now. We actually built the very first residential internet service in the country for Bell Labs as part of the Microsoft At Home project, years and years and years ago. Among our projects, we've built thousands and thousands of fiber miles, and we've built the fiber network that connects all of the Rutgers campuses, all six campuses in New Jersey, it's about 70 buildings. We do a lot of work for Verizon, a lot of engineering work for them. They're currently our largest builder. And we've also built 10 rural New England towns, nine for EC Fiber in Vermont, the town of Leverett in Massachusetts, and we're in the process of building five more, the town of Petersham in Massachusetts, and four more towns for Burlington Telecom up in Vermont. The model that we've come up with is basically a public-private partnership, and the first town that we're building under that is the town of Petersham. So they've, they were the lucky ones to iron out all the problems. We're a privately-held company, and the owners firmly believe in that you should invest in what you know, and what they know is building fiber networks. So for a lot of places that are overlooked by the big cable companies, or Verizon, or whoever, we feel like there's a, there's an opportunity there.
So are you connecting with other towns in Franklin County as well?
We would like to.
Yeah.
Our goal is to have, in Maine, about 2,000 homes passed. Not everybody needs to take service, but we just need to have, you know, enough of a take rate to at least break even.
Yeah.
And that break-even point in range, it would be about a 40% take rate, so for every 10 houses that we pass. And we would build out the entire town, which is why the town has to participate if you're creating the Rite-A-Way. We can't put our fiber on the poles unless you give us the Rite-A-Way.
Yeah.
And because there's a cost associated with that, there might be some outlying homes that you say, well, they're summertime residents, it's going to cost us a lot of money to get up that hill, we might not build out to them. And if you don't give us the Rite-A-Way, we don't have to, we can't build. But that becomes a town decision, not a decision of others.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask?
Yep, go ahead, Al.
Is that 40% take rate, include the three plantations that are around here that really are sort of part of the town, but they're not?
No, we would look to them for separate deals, but we couldn't build in, like, Rangel Plantation without first getting Rangel. So they would have a different, different take rate than we'd have to set up in order to make that at least a break-even.
So you're talking about going to Quasac all the way to Gamuslocken?
Yeah, one thing I should clarify is that we're proposing an aerial network. So basically, wherever there's poles, wherever the poles can get to, we can get to. We also don't care whether it's a public road or a private road, as long as there's poles, and as long as the subscribers at the end of those poles would be, would be interested in building.
Great.
So, sorry to jump on your news, Al.
This is interesting, I think it's good news.
Yeah. Wonderful, so you're going to leave business cards and...
I'm just here to introduce myself, give you the, grasp of the idea. I'd be happy to come back and do a presentation. We're also going to be looking into whether there's some funds available from Connect Maine in order to pay the town's portion. It's been our policy not to take any public funds for the construction of the network, because it just, it adds in more rent tape than it's really worth. You know, for prevailing wage, we play our, pay our spicers, splicers above prevailing wage, but just the paperwork that goes along with it just makes it kind of tough. We also, just as an FYI, we have a federal contract in, I forget what they call it now, that allows you to purchase stuff off of a, off the federal contract, without even going out to bid. Again, this will be our first proposal in Maine, so there's, every town, every state has their own little issues, but we'd be happy to try to work through that with the town.
Well, we've got a economic developer that we contract with that has, you know, looked into obtaining grants and other monies, you know, for current projects and, you know, this, so what would, so I guess I'll leave it up to, you know, maybe we'll leave it up to the two of you to connect?
And then I'll connect him to the Economic Development Committee, which I think is great, and to Darryl. I think all three of those pieces would work together.
Now, okay.
Well, if this is a good time, we could just pass out cards now.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I was also in our, on one of the bulletins for February 16th, where this is in legislature right now, where they're looking to go from $10 million to $1,000,000 million, so, I don't know what the state's going to match as well. Something wipes right out, I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I should also mention that, my daughter lives in Lewiston, so I'm very happy to...
Okay, so there's a connection, all right.
There's a discount.
All right, any other Public to Speak on a Non-Agenda Item? Okay, moving on to Boards and Committees, are there any updates from Boards or Committees that the Board would like to share?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just received this today, this was from the Economic Development Committee, they wanted that.
Yeah, Kate came by and saw me, and I told her we'd, you know, it's nothing we're going to review at today's meeting, but we could have it for the Wednesday budget meeting.
Yeah, she wanted it passed on, and that's all, so I'm passing it on to Kate.
Yeah, so, she'll probably attend our budget meeting on Wednesday and be there to answer any questions, so, so hang on, bring these with you on Wednesday. Thank you, Tim. Moving on to Section 6 and its consent items, the first one is a hanger lease agreement for T-Hanger Lease Number 4.
This is the same language, Madam Chair and Madam Chair, we use for all the other leases.
All right, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I want to make a motion, we sign the consent to occupancy of the lease for T-Hanger Number 4.
Donnie's motion?
Second.
Shelley's seconds. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Shelley?
Just in the third paragraph, structure, is there supposed to be five in there?
Yeah, that's supposed to be in there, because that is, that is the fifth digit from the third hanger down.
Again.
I had to make this out somehow, Kevin.
What?
Like, what?
You're like five years...
I had to make it out somehow. I knew you were going to get that. I got it, I got it just ahead of you. We'll fix that, yeah, we'll fix it. We'll fix it.
Like it's Monday, that's cool.
All right, presentation is everything, do you know how many times I look at a letter a day?
Yeah, we'll fix that, we'll change it.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the Board? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. 3-0, Jim is out of the room. Next is, excuse me, Treasurer's Disbursement Warrants for State Fees, and this is something we have to sign every year, isn't that right, Tim?
Correct, yeah, it's just the standard. Our audit is needed when we do the audit, and also for the municipal authority.
Madam Chair, make a motion, we sign the Treasurer's Disbursement Warrant for State Fees.
Again.
Donnie's motion, Shelley's seconds. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Shelley?
Okay, so there was blanks on here, is anything supposed to be filled out?
Not that I'm aware of, we will give it a check. You sign it, and then, this basically just says that you're, we authorize you to sign those warrants.
Yep, that's it, yep.
That's, that's what we're authorizing you to do, and you're the names that are going to appear on here.
Okay.
That's what this is, it's that annually, that's why we're going to do it annually. So it's just...
All right, I just want to make sure we didn't have to check any of these boxes.
No, and it prevents, so that you can't act alone, you can't disburse money alone.
Perfect.
And that's really what it's, basically all it says.
All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor? And that's 3-0 in favor. Next is the Policy on Treasurer's Disbursement Warrants for Employee Wages and Benefits.
You can motion to accept the policy on Treasurer's Disbursement Warrants for Employee Wages and Benefits as presented.
Shelley's motion and Donnie's seconds. Jim, we're in Number 6, Consent Items on the last, on the last item. Any questions or comments on this form? All those in favor? And that's unanimous, 4-0.
I forgot to ask one question.
Okay, go ahead.
If, if something changes with the election coming up, and anybody changes on the board, do we have to revise it at that point?
Yeah, we do, we do it then first.
Do it then, okay.
We, yeah, this generally follows the audit, which was normally, should have been done in September, so if you go back, October, so if you go back to the original timeline schedule, this, that would be right, so you'd be elected in June, we would do the normal one, and it's, so it's just running late, because the audit's running late, that's all.
All right, I was just...
Yeah, so normally...
All righty. Moving on to Correspondence, we've got a thank you letter to the Rangel Fire Department and Rescue, and it says, "Thank you for everything you've done, for being the special people that you are, thank you so very much. There aren't just, there aren't enough words to express our appreciation of your love, kindness, and respect for our dad. You're an amazing group of men and women, you folks work his world for sure. Thanks, and love to you all. Terry Eaton and Sherri Lewis." This will be for Howie's...
Howie's.
Yeah.
Family.
That's very funny.
And there'll be a, we're doing a memorial service for him up here, Saturday, July 7th, at 11 o'clock at the Episcopal Church.
Okay.
And we're putting that on.
Okay, wonderful. Then we've got a thank you card for Franklin Savings Bank, it simply says, "Thank you for choosing Franklin Savings Bank for financial needs. Sincerely, Kathy." And then last in Correspondence, we've got an invitation from Rangel Health and Wellness for the 2018 Community Visioning, Community Visioning Meeting, and the date, March 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the gym at the school. Which is next week. And that's it for Correspondence. Next, under Old Business, we've got a cell phone contract update.
So I want to just fill you in where I'm at with the Verizon cell phone contract. They have submitted two proposals, the 60-foot tower, which was the original agreement that we talked about, and an 80-foot, originally, then we talked about 100-foot tower, then they came back with an 80-foot tower. So I sent both those contracts to legal.
By law.
And they're being, they're being addressed, not as fast as I would like, but they're being addressed. They have some confusion issues, they don't understand why Verizon would build a $160,000 tower and then give it to us. And I said, because they do that all over the state, that's how they get the towers out. And the benefit is, we get the tower, so they're concerned with, well, what's the maintenance cost on the tower? I said, the maintenance cost isn't, there's nothing, it's a brand-new tower, it's going to last probably, we'll live all of us. The maintenance agreement that Kristen's concerned with is not their cell phone equipment, it's the tower. So I got to get that clarified, I'm waiting to get that clarified from Verizon. So I am hoping that I will have a, the formal proposal in front of you, the last step of that was, I met with co-enforcement to decide if, the 80-foot tower, so in the 80-foot tower, the benefit is, we can put one more person on that tower and charge rate. What Verizon is asking is, it's the same deal, except the first year they'll be free of rent, then pay rent of the $20,000, $21,000 for the next four years. The deal is, they put up a more expensive tower at 80 feet, and we can add someone on there at any time we want, and we can start charging rent, so we can get more money. So those will probably be the options when we're done, by next meeting, I hope they have that. I was hoping to have it today, but Kristen didn't get to it in time. So we're finishing it up, and that's, that's basically where we're going to end up at. Now, this, this has been done in Yamath, they have one sitting in their door, the police department, fire department store, yeah, they got one in Yamath. There's one in Polk, they have one in their door, so this has been done in other places.
Yeah.
It's not, this is not new. They partner with Municipalities of Public Safety to do this, and the, I'm trying to say that the right word. The, one of the benefits for us is that, once it's up and running, we can go to Verizon and get a package deal for employees' cell phones and employees' use of better rates and so forth. And the part two of that is if, obviously, there's an emergency, instead of depending on a tower that's not being maintained somewhere going down, the tower's going to be up and running right here, because we're up and running because of our generating system. So that means that all downtown, no matter what, even during an emergency or power outage, you can still have cell phone coverage. So even though it's Verizon coverage, you still have cell phone coverage. That, that's where we're at. So that's, that's in a nutshell, you know, I was hoping to have it done, but Kristen didn't get it out, and we're still in the talking with Verizon, finishing some few last pieces. So by next meeting, I hope to have a proposal in front of you to pass. And talk to Tom, co-enforcement feels that the, does not, it does not qualify, does not need to go in front of the planning board, that he can issue the building permit himself. We vetted that out through the ordinances and the codes, and so we're just waiting to get it finished, and I got one question left, and we'll be done.
Okay. All right, wonderful.
And the location's going to be right here on...
Yeah, they're just replacing my old tower, redo tower, all back.
Yeah, Mark?
May I ask him a question?
Yeah.
So they're going to let you lease, if they put an 80-foot tower in, they're going to let you lease tower space to someone else, and you'll get the rent from that? And will they allow you to lease that to a competitor of theirs, someone that's in the same... There's no restrictions on... No restrictions on the lease. Because we own the tower after. Once they, once they turn the power on, then you, they're giving us the tower, and what they got to do is, they got to put my fire department in North Staz, antennas and all the stuff, they're going to mount that on it. That's really the promise of how this came to be about. So the 60-foot tower, they could only put their cell stuff at the top. We talked about it on foot, it was too glummy, too big. 80-foot seems to fit, and at 80 feet, they, they're at the top, and they can stay at the top. Somebody can be at 70 feet, because we're at 60 feet with our fire antennas. So that gives one more company some, someplace to plug in at 6, at 7 feet. And there's no restriction on the deed, that's one of the things I made sure of, is that we can rent the space, because we're going to own the tower, not them, so they can't tell us who to rent it to, so.
And the thing, I mean, you think of it, if we didn't grab this opportunity with Verizon, someone else will.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, that was, I know, I know a Selectman had a concern the last time, that, you know, people are, we have a larger, you know, population of US cellular users, but, you know, if, if we don't grab it, then, you know, Joe Smith on the next hill up will, you know...
There's already, yeah, there's, I know of at least two proposals right now for the towers.
Yeah.
And within this, within a five-minute walking distance of here. So, you know, we're working to get it done, it's coming very, very close.
Wonderful. All right, Town Park Update, Tim?
Okay, so, we met with M&amp;H, and here is a, in your book, I've included the latest of the park scheduled timeframe, what it looks like. Going through, the biggest next step that I got to, I'm working hard on now, that I got to get done in the next three weeks, we're going to get a contract put together that defines everything we're going to do, put it, get it to legal real quick and get it back in, get it stand by you guys. And then, with that being said, you see the work, April 3rd to May 5th, they start, they install the silk fence, do the erosion patrol measures, they're going to work with the subs on May 7th. But as you follow that timeline through, you clearly see that we finish on June 23rd, which is the dead, drop dead deadline date. Now, talking to M&amp;H, and a meeting with Eric Gall, and so there's a couple things we got to, we got to talk about, some grading work and a couple other things. It looks like we're going to be able to, barring, we don't have six weeks of bad rainy weather, it looks like on June 23rd, for the most part, the park will be like 98% done. The part that won't be done will be some seeding, grasslings, and some, some, you know, the grass growing and so forth, which they'll have to come back in September and do some, probably some secondary planting. But Ken is, and they're confident that they can get enough people... But Ken is, and, and they're, they're confident that they can get enough people in there and get the system done, so that come July 4th, the park is open and running. The only issue that we're...
Fourth and third.
What's that?
Fourth, okay.
Well, the third, you know, that, that week, I mean, that's... So the only issue that we're having is, is we're negotiating, we're negotiating money. We only have so much money to do this with, there's only so much pot left in the, in the cattle, and, you know, there's stuff to be done. So we're trying to, we're finishing up the fine touches, trying to cut where we can, trying to make a few last-minute changes. So, just so you know, if you try to get me the next couple weeks, my, my whole thing's gonna be constant, I gotta, cause Joe left last Thursday, the last day. So this is all on me, I gotta get this contract organized, done with Eric Gall, I gotta get this in front of you. This is my big thing right now, so I'm busy trying to get this done, then I got my fire department stuff to take care of it. This is, I gotta get this done, or we're not gonna have a park, so...
So, I mean, they, they submitted a list, you know...
But that's right, so what we're gonna do, Madam Chair, I gotta take that list with Eric Gall, and gonna vet it out to make sure that it meets our specs, so what we wanted.
Okay.
That we didn't, they didn't change.
Okay, I see.
That they didn't say, "Okay, we're just gonna put down dirt with no grass," and we didn't pay attention to that. So we gotta, we gotta match A to B, and then once we get A to B, we get all that done, and they put prices on it, then I'll have a final price. Once I have that done, we then have to write a generic contract that says, "This is all the work they're gonna perform in accordance with the contract." So we don't get, you know, so we have, and then, once that's all done, stick that in front of the lawyers, stamp it, say yep, and then, including plans of the bathhouse, so, get that to you, you guys sign it, then I can turn it back and say, "Okay, this is the amount of money we have, this is what we agreed to do, the work."
Yeah.
Get it done, so forth. So it's kind of the process, so right now, we're in the very final stages of, you know, is there gonna be a rock here, is there gonna be a paving block, is there gonna be, you know?
Okay.
That's, that's where we're at, we're down to the nitty-gritty, I'm just rushing to try and get everything done, so we can get this done. We did this, we did it, so...
So will this still be at or under the voter-approved monies? Or are you going over, does it...
No, no, can't go over.
Yeah.
Can't go over, I gotta do it for the, that's, and that's, that's the piece, we gotta, you know, we're trying to pinch every penny, and trying to get it all done at the same time, you know, so, we can't go over, we've only got so much to, to use, so... That's, that's, any questions on the park update, anything I can...
Nope.
I mean, where, you know, where, so far, M&amp;H's been really good to work with, they've really, they've been innovative in finding stuff to cut, or redefine, I guess is a better way to call it, create some efficiencies that can help us save some monies. But I just gotta make sure that I'm working with Eric Gall, that, you know, if you call for this, that it looks like that.
Yeah.
That it's not, I don't want you guys to show up when they go, "Tim, this doesn't look anything like what we thought."
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know. So, just so you know, we're working hard at it, and we'll get it, hopefully get it done next couple weeks.
Alright, thank you, Tim. Moving on to, um, the last item under Old Business, and that's the Spirit of America Tribute, and is this just a reminder, Tracy?
They send this out annually, and it correlates with whoever we dedicate the town report to. So they sent it to me, so I put it back in front of you, last year when we chose Brian, I went ahead and put his name in for it too.
Yeah.
It's just, I mean, they give him another award, it's a, it made him feel really good, so, I just think it's something I should all keep with, it's a, it's a nice, it's a nice gesture. All we gotta do is just give the information on the person. So anyway, they emailed me, so I'm just putting it back in front of you. I just, um, I think it's, it seems to work pretty smoothly to use the same person that dedicated the town, whoever that may be.
Right.
Do this year, but anyway, that's all that is.
We'll figure that out. Wonderful, thank you. Alright, New Business. The Overlook Sidewalk Design Scores, yes, did you wanna go back, that's something?
No, I'll just add to New Business.
Okay. So, um, looks like they are recommending that Wright Pierce be selected, score the highest.
Yeah, and they do, they don't do it by price, they do it by qualifications, experience, all those things, preferences, the ability to control costs in the project. And this is, this is being done because, remember, this is federally controlled money, so we have to do it by, um, their, their process. And they don't bring the money into it until after we open, then they negotiate, kinda like the bid, it's bid to bill, you know, the price. So they bid it, and then they, they say, "Okay, this is the money, this is what we can build this project for," then they, they downsize the project to make it work. So, this is where we're at, and I recommended the board, uh, award Wright Pierce the...
Overlook Sidewalk Project.
Sidewalk Project, and I've seen the initial, uh, draft design, you know, with just some thought ideas, and it's absolutely phenomenal. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna really redefine the Rangeli, coming into Rangeli, what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, that's...
They've really, they've really, they've, they've taken it in four sections and have really, um, I saw Wright Pierce as one of their designs that they submitted. I mean, nice shrubs along the way, really low-level lighting, LED lighting, it comes on at dusk, bright, and then fades out in the early evening by midnight. So if someone was walking up and down the path, you know, cause they don't figure you're gonna walk at midnight, you're gonna walk at dusk. Bunches, really, really, really nice stuff. It's gonna be, I think it's really gonna define the entrance of the town coming into the area.
Alright, we have a motion.
I'm trying to make a motion, we approve the overlook sidewalk design from Wright, from Wright Pierce.
Don's motion?
Okay.
And Shelley's seconds? Any more questions or comments for Tim? All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Moving on to the Town Manager's Report. Yeah, oh, Shelley, sorry.
Um, so under New Business, so we can start listing it at Old Business, can we put down the downtown revitalization plan? So we make sure we get updates, because where, they were supposed to start working on that in February, March? So we can work this too.
Yes.
Report.
Perfect.
Alrighty. We've got the Economic Development Coordinator Report. Is there anything new on this, Tim, that you're aware of, or is it pretty, pretty similar to the last one?
Nope, um, pretty similar to the last one. He, the only thing is, he's working on a couple infrastructure project grants for, for SOAR and for the fire department for the... But other than that, nothing, nothing, um, I don't know, Shelley, if you, was that, were you at the last student economic development meeting?
No, I missed that one.
Okay.
Alrighty, I just dated for 1-19 to 2-8.
Okay.
We haven't had a meeting since, so last meeting was 7.
That would make sense.
Next one.
And, uh, we've got Joe's last bi-weekly department update.
Yep, stone ice control, obviously, normal operations, still making it, still treating the plant. The IRFP for the line system for the SOAR was released, and planning meeting for the fire base control. Police department, um, 273 calls, 103 golden checks, 90 community policing, and so forth down through, as you can see. Under the fire department, we can stop having fires anytime.
Seriously.
Under the fire department, um, you know, we've been busy. We had chimney fire, two snowmobile accidents over the weekend, three guys hit the pressure, it was going about 100 miles an hour, thank God they went over it and not into it. Yeah, they were flying, they were just screaming, and that resulted in two of them being injured.
Yeah.
But anyway, so in the back page, you see the file that we had down in Venus on, uh, on February 17th, it came in about, just about 1:00 AM. We responded, we got there in 17 minutes, and basically what you see is what we had, and we pulled in.
Yeah.
He started, I did the investigation, it started as a chimney fire, uh, where the fireplace was, there was a metal vestas chimney that ran behind the stove, ran through a closet, turned left in the closet, went up through the exterior wall to another metal vestas chimney outside. When he came downstairs, he said, "There's smoke detectors sounding." It was smoking out downstairs, he was fire around thimble, he put it out in the extinguisher, opened the windows to let some of the smoke out. And then he said he looked back and he saw the fire again, so he sprayed it with an extinguisher again. Then he said, "At that point, he thought he'd go out and check the chimney," and he went to the closet, opened the closet, the closet's full of fire, so he shut the door and called us. But by the time we got there, it was, you know, the house was built 1910, it had what they call the, um, weeping pine wall still, you know, the pitch still. And once this thing took off, it just went, and we, we pulled in, it was a prevailing wind from the lake, and we saved the garage, that's all we could save. The house was well underway by the time we got there. The closest water was remarkably, the Hydronet Blue Cell is the only place I could get water from. So we had to shuttle water 25 miles round trip. And thank God to Phillips uses and Strong for coming up, and really Strong, I really appreciate their, because the poor guys in Strong came up with a truck, and they hit a bump on Walden Flats, and they left all their hoes right there.
Oh my gosh.
Poor guy, but I thanked him, and they went down, picked it up, and went back home.
Oh.
So, uh, the good news is, you know, nobody got hurt. It was a tough fire to fight, because it was a cold night, and, uh, you know, it was a big house, and it was a lot, we, we got there about 1:00 in the morning, we didn't clear till 9:00, 11:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
I have talked to them since, you know, they're insured, and, and Les was very active with our response, he said, "I know we were way down the end of the road," so... Very unfortunate, nice, nice people, nice house, thank God they, they had working smoke detectors, got out. You know, before him and the dog got out, his wife was in my airship.
Yeah.
So...
So sad.
On March 6th, 2018, is going to be airport public informational meeting at the school. And this is on the, the next step is the road project, the road, uh, realignment of the road, thank you, realignment of the road, that's the next step in the process. On your next meeting, March 5th, Shane McDougal and Guy, I think, will be here, I don't know, I believe it's them two, will be here to talk to you about that. You're gonna get it first, and then they'll do the public hearing the next night. So, um, that's to get information and design, I guess, about the design of the road project.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I?
Yeah.
I'm a butter, and I got a certified mail regarding that meeting there, and, uh, what it is, is a major amendment application to the site location thing with the Department of Environmental Protection. And it says that the application is for the Steven A.B. Municipal Airfield, extend runway 1432, and construct parallel taxiway. And, I'm still, uh, a little unclear on this parallel taxiway portion, and the, how it's been included. Because my recollection is that, at the Board of Selectmen meeting, when Guy Ruel and the airport manager recommended that you go include the parallel taxiway in the environmental assessment, it was for efficiency reasons, and that, you know, it would be done. And, uh, it seemed to make sense, and, but that it wasn't really necessary. But since that time, you know, it's, they're setting up a capital reserve account for it, or requested that a capital reserve account be started for it, with 25,000 for this coming budget, and, you know, now it's in a part of the, uh, site, uh, location development thing, a part of the amendment to that, and I'm just wondering, uh, and it's, it's in the capital plan, uh, also, the five-year capital plan for the airport. And I'm just wondering how something that, of this nature, 7.8 million dollars, goes without further discussion input from the town, from being included in an assessment for efficiency reasons, into something that seems like, you know, everybody's, like it's gonna be done. And, uh, so I was actually gonna, that was the other thing I was gonna bring up onto the public to speak on non-agenda items, but when I saw it on the agenda, I, I had to go off. But I was gonna ask you also to, to look into that, and just see how this ended up at this status here, where...
I thought at the last meeting, um, which was held in the multipurpose room at the school, that the chairman of the Airport Commission had asked about that, because he's removing a hump in the middle of the, they added that.
Yeah.
In the middle of the runway, and the chairman asked me, he says, "Now that we, now that that will be removed, and we can see, you know..."
End from end.
End from end, he said, "We won't need the parallel taxiway, correct?" And Guy agreed with him. Is my recollection.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
That's what I heard too.
So, could you look into that?
Yeah, absolutely.
And see if that really should be included in all these three things in the capital plan, in the budget reserve account?
Yeah, can, can we have a copy of that letter?
Yeah, you can make a copy.
Okay. Cause that's, that was the last, it was discussed publicly, um, and like I said, it was the chairman of the Airport Commission and a pilot, who got that clarified publicly, and so, it's interesting that it's in there, okay. Alright.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, it's on the agenda. Alright, so, I'm just, what?
What time?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
At the school?
At the school, um, yes. Well, it would be, it'll definitely be, I mean, Mark got a certified letter, I guess, cause he's in a butter, so I'm sure it will mention the time.
But they're gonna be here on the 5th.
They're gonna be here on the 5th.
So I can't make the 6th, I can't make the 6th.
You can't make the 6th, okay.
So, I would encourage you to come to the meeting on the 5th and ask that question, I mean, I think that's a relevant question, you can come ask them on the 5th. Be interested in getting the answer. So, I mean, that, that might, come, come all this, sit right here and ask that question, because that, you know, the way I heard it was the same thing what you heard, is it... You know, now, they, I don't know, I can't tell if they're planning, just planning it on April, I don't know, I don't, I'm not in your head.
Alright. Um... And then moving on.
Other business, I've appointed Keith Savage as interim public services director with a stipend. He'll act in that capacity, continue to drive the soil superintendent doing that, um, until such time we fill that role, and we've discussed. So, moving forward, what I'd like to have the board do, talk with Joe, talk with Anna Lee, and talk about filling the open positions. It's our feeling that, and the reason I pick Keith is cause Keith has been in all the meetings with the planning as far as the soil lines and all that stuff, or so for the park and the roads, Keith, Keith has a pretty good grasp on it, and he's kinda got the time that he could do it in the office, do the office stuff. Uh, nobody else does, so I'm gonna use Keith. Talking with Anna Lee, talking with Joe, we, we feel strongly, what we should do, is leave that position vacant for a minute, and try to get by as best we can. I don't, I'm just soon hired tomorrow. But we think probably what the best option to do is to hire your manager first, and then hire, with the manager, go right out and hire a public services director. Because if you do it backwards, and you hire a public services director, he's gonna come in knowing that he's got a new manager coming in, he's gonna be brand new and on probation, and if he thinks, "Well, maybe I get a manager that doesn't like me, or doesn't agree with my thought," you know, and then he end up... So you might have a hard time getting somebody to take the public services director, knowing you're trying to get a manager at the same time. So we felt better you move, hustle, move forward with your manager, hire your manager, first order of business, say, "Okay, now, hit the ground running, go hire." You know, in the interim, we can advertise, and, and, but let, get your manager on board, and then let your manager and committee hire your public services director.
Yeah.
Move, get that done, and then, then he's got somebody brand new with him that he hired, as opposed to somebody that we hired.
Yep.
He's great, Anna Lee.
Yeah. Let him get hired when we want.
Yeah.
Especially if they lose from outside, leaves a job, comes here, and it doesn't work out with any manager, then he's in kind of in limbo.
Right, right.
Or she. Maybe we'll find...
But also, I mean, you might have somebody that may have more experience in, you know, contracts, this, that, and the other. He may not, he may feel he might not want somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a potential too.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, that's the plan, and so just as long as you're one to brief you, make sure you're okay with it.
Yeah.
While we work on it.
We're gonna move forward.
Okay.
The septic tank service lineup at the airport is frozen again this year from the deep, it freezes where it crosses on the road, and it keeps freezing annually. So, we're going to, sometime this... Um, so, uh, we're going to, sometime this summer, I think we're gonna end up having to dig that up. Probably have public works to put in more insulation and do that, but we dug up the, what they call the D-box. Mark, you could probably be, help us with what the D-box is, what's the D-box?
It's a distribution box that distributes the effluent into the leach field there, and few give it, spreads it out within-
So, that wasn't frozen, so the pipe itself, the line's frozen, this happens every year. And so, instead of us, we just need to fix it. And what happens is, driving over the road is buried probably at the right depth, but just driving over the road forces the frost down annually. So, public, something public work can do, but it's frozen, bathroom's not working up there, we're, we're, yeah, just watch it up.
Okay.
So, don't go use the bathroom at the airport, okay?
Alright, gosh, alright, let me write that down.
Yeah, they bumped the tank, so, I mean.
Get by, as long as they don't get-
Uh, the last thing that I have, so, last spring, we were approached, Joe and myself, it was approached by Poland Spring and Main DOT. Poland Spring did a public-private partnership with Main DOT. They're paying to rebuild all 16 from Main Street Route 4 all the way to Reddington Road this year. And then they're going next year from Reddington Road all the way to Eustis. The reason they're doing this is so they can make it a class-one road, where they can transport, so the road won't be posted anymore, and they can haul water year-round. That's great, that's fine. Uh, they came and asked us if there was anything really we might consider we would want. Um, so I kinda gave them like 10 options, I was taking a vacation in the Cayman Islands, and, but they said, I thought, you know, a, a trip for the selectmen to Las Vegas for a week, but, but they really didn't seem to like those ideas, so. We kinda, so I told them, I said, one of the things that did come through it, um, is I see a lot of people who use, or would walk out Depot Street and walk, so I said, how about building a walking path from Depot Street down to Robbins Adam, um, and adding that in. So, they went out, they engineered it, found out how much it was gonna cost, which is pretty expensive, I wanna tell you, quite a distance. So, I met with, I got a call from DOT, and Poland Spring came in and saw me. Plan's going up to bid next week, they gave us a walking path, they're building in a walking path.
Nice.
When you come out Depot Street, um, it's gonna be a three-foot walking path all the way down Robbins Avenue. And, um, at the same time, we asked about some stretching stations, they call them. And Poland Spring is going to install four stretching stations at our location, free of cost to town. So, we'll put one at Depot Street, one on the corner of Depot and 16, some, another one farther down, so that people can walk and stretch and so forth. Um, so that's, they're gonna do that, and this is a project that we got, it's well over almost $200,000 that benefit us that we got.
That's wonderful.
So, it's gonna be, uh, it'll be a nice project when we're done, people will be able to back to Depot Street, and actually walk out Depot Street to the old rail bed, walk down 16 safely, down on Pleasure Street, the new sidewalk, and all the way down Main Street. And there'll be stretching machines over.
Have they mentioned anything about a bigger shoulder? So, when the trucks come-
That's what I'm talking about.
Both ways, there's someplace to go if they have to?
That's, I think that's probably what, when they build a class-one road. Mark, if they, they make it a class-one, or is that what the right term is, class-one and class? If they make it a road, a, a top-of-the-line road, they gotta improve the shoulders, I know that.
They probably, they probably have eight-foot, uh, pavement on each side.
Yeah.
So, it'd be like a- Right, you have your travel lane. It'd be like a breakdown lane. You'd have a paved, a paved shoulder, a breakdown lane.
Yeah, that's, because like, out the couple of winters, you know, especially during the winter, you get two on the same curve, so, you saw what happened already.
So, anyway, that's, that's, I just wanted to pass it on, it was a secret success that we just, we had a meeting, we told them what we thought, and they went out and they did it. And, uh, so we're gonna end up with a nice walking path, so, again, that'll help enhance downtown Rangelane, our, our little area, and, you know.
I think we ought to send them a lot of thank you for offering to do this and whatever. I, I think we ought to have, try to have a better relationship with them, because they're gonna be here, and you might as well work with them as try to work against them. I mean, I think it's too bad that, you know, everybody's kinda down on them because of the trucks. You can't stop the trucks, so you might as well just, and if they're willing to kick in some money to do projects like this, there's other things they may want to kick in if we, you know, show a little appreciation.
Actually, Jim, you're absolutely right, you know, the last piece of that, is they've come and asked if there are any, um, festivals or outings or anything like that that they could help sponsor. And like I said, they're absolutely on, I give them the list, and they wanna come back and talk to the parade, the logging parade people, they wanna talk to the pond hockey people, and the snowdial people, and, so they wanna, you know, the airport thing, so they, they have taken a new twist, they wanna get more involved in the community aspect, which, and I agree with Jim, I think he's right. You know, I've reached out to them, and they've been nothing but pleasant to work with for me. And when we've had complaints on trucks, I've called them, and they, they've addressed them.
Yeah, there was, there was, yeah, there was a real heavy volume day la, one day last week, I think, I counted 12 trucks in 45 minutes.
They, they're allowed to do, I think, 79 trucks in a 24-hour cycle.
Well, the reason why you're seeing more, they're going out to Dead River now, they're coming back to-
Yeah, they're coming back this way to the-
And it's, everybody, you know, as you said, they stagger them, but when you start coming from Standish, and you gotta come up through Alvin and all those places, you hit the stoplights.
Yeah.
Even if you've got them staggering every 20 minutes or so, if the truck ahead gets in, in all the stoplights, I mean, they're bound to catch up to each other.
Right.
They just can't help that, so, you know.
Is what it is.
Yep, Al?
So, in two years, it'll be a class-one road all the way to Stratton from here. Well, this is an appropriate topic for my tenure as reporter to end on.
Yeah.
Because if you go back in the archives of my column a few years, I wrote one about the advisability of a shoulder, bikeable shoulder from here to Stratton, because it is the best varnon cycle route around here, because it's relatively flat, it follows the river, and it's got nice views and so on. And I was trying to make a case to the DOT with that, and I mailed off a copy. Of course, I didn't hear anything. Um, but I'm really pleased, and it should be billed as that. This is gonna be a terrific bike path that's gonna add to the amenities of the Rangelane region.
Yeah.
For cyclists.
Yeah.
Because all the other ones have huge hills.
I remember reading that article you wrote, Alan. And I actually thought, I said, this man rides a bicycle on a Stratton road in all those parts.
Definitely.
When the line is here and the dirt is-
I did, but you, you can't ride it sensibly without at least a rearview mirror on your helmet or your, or your handlebars.
Yeah.
Because when I'd see a truck coming, I'd get off in the gravel and let them go, and then get back on, because it, there's nothing there. So, and so I think this is terrific news.
Yeah. Mark?
And they were, yeah, they were nothing but pleasant to deal with.
Two things, one, uh, Jim mentioned the loaded water trucks going south now. And someone came up to me and said, didn't they enter into an agreement with Rangelane that they'd just come in empty and go out the other way loaded? And I said, I had heard that, but I've never read it, and, and they've never taken them out loaded until the last couple of weeks, do you know anything about? I know Rob was all over it when he was on the-
I have a copy of the contract, I'd have to look at it. I don't think it specifies, what it specifies is, I think, the number of trucks per trips per 24 hours. I don't think it specifies how and what direction they came, nobody put that in the contract.
Okay.
The last time I read, I, I, I'm not 100% sure, I'd have to read it again. I am sure that I think the number's 79 of the 24-hour period, or 97, it's one, it's up there though. It's, it's a lot of trucks in 24 hours.
Yeah.
A lot of trucks in 24 hours, so, yeah.
Okay, so, I didn't, it doesn't matter to me, but someone just asked.
No, I, I had a couple of people ask me as well.
And, because I thought about that, but I think when I read the contract a year or two ago, it just specifically talks about trips to Reddington, it, it says number of trucks, so, so that means, you know, if it's, if it's 80, then they can only go 40 up and 40 back. They can only still do the same number of trips, but then again, who's counting, I guess?
Yeah.
That's what they're hoping.
That's what they're hoping.
Okay, point two of my thing was, I don't know, on this trail thing, uh, the forestry museum, logging museum, uh, actually owns the, the land that the brochures gave them for that, actually encompasses the railroad track portion in Dallas, all behind where the oil tanks were, all the way back out to Route 16, and, uh, I'm involved with that now, they may be the president of that there this past year. And we've been talking about trying to improve trail, and we have some trails through the woods there, because they have 86 acres, and we've made some hiking trails, which a lot of people use and stuff like that. And we've been wanting to tie it into the rest of, uh, what the town has going already. And, uh, so, I haven't been in, in, in on any of these discussions, but if you're at the table, uh, you could let them know that, you know, any of these trail people that are looking to do more and stuff, that, the logging of the forestry museum would be interested in working with them.
There's a broad group of, of, especially parents, mothers, and that have kids and stuff, that walk in the daytime, take, you know, little kids that are doing that, that are looking for these trail stuff.
Yeah.
So, I, I just think it's a good idea to have a walking trail in town.
Absolutely, it's a great idea. Shelley?
Um, I thought that the, um, they tried not to have the Poland Spring trucks going back and forth, one way more towards the summer, because we're so busy in the summer.
Summertime they don't, yeah.
I thought, yeah.
Summertime they only allow, summertime they only allow them to go all.
Right.
But this time of year.
And they trip at night, they're, they come in and out, I mean, I just remember a few years back, waiting for my son to get out of work, and just watching them, they were, one was going this way, one was coming this way, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, they are, they're pretty slow going up the hill by, you know, when they're, when they're loaded, going up by my office. So, rotate some people. Alright, is that it for-
Oh, I know.
Town manager report? Moving on to board of selectmen communication. Tricia, I got this letter from the census bureau, is this, we're not doing the census?
No.
Alright. Alright, I, this, I'll just check a box on my website or something, I, you know.
I can do it for you.
Okay. Um, and I handed, um, I handed Tim, because we, one thing we have to keep in mind this year with this year's budget, that if, um, that any non-essential services that don't get approved by the town of Rangelane voters, they don't get funded. So, I, Tim's, I, there was a, there was a guideline of required municipal services on the MMA website that I gave Tim, he's gonna look at it and make sure that it's what, because we, we need some kind of guideline, you know, and, and it says, it says, it identifies the statute, um, uh, you know, within main law of what municipalities are required to provide. And so, that should, that should help a lot, I would think.
I'll put together a list, I'll run it by Steve, and then hopefully get a list out to you by the next meeting.
Yeah. That'd be great.
It's a lot to take. And just so you know, the budget committee met, and they're almost through the budget. Um, they got one more meeting to finalize one thing, which they're gonna meet, I think, either Wednesday or Thursday, I don't know which one, and they're gonna-
Okay, alright.
They, they've been working hard with theirs, so, yeah.
Wonderful.
We're gonna have to keep up, get job.
We're gonna have to get a job.
Do you have a budget meeting Wednesday night?
We do, we have a budget meeting Wednesday night, and, uh, so is the, you're gonna give this handout to the budget committee as well, that Kate?
I will.
Thank you. Yeah, that would be wonderful. Any other board information to share? If not, alright, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405, 6D, to discuss labor negotiations with Anna Lee Rosenblatt.
Second.
All those in favor? And then that's unanimous.